Here is your leave statement.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Glad to have everybody here on this warm summer afternoon. Unusual. We're used to being here by now, so we're good today. Start with the approval of the minutes of the June 17, 2013 regular meeting. Have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Second, Ms. Cawester, Mr. Wilkinson, is that an all yes vote?
Yes.
We have, anyone signed a pen today just on that list there, Bernie? We have two presentations. First would be Josh Brumfield, Lake County Assessor. Mr. Brumfield, good to have you with us Saturday night.
Good afternoon. Board members and Mr. President, Ms. Lucas, I have briefly spoke with you in the past and we have discussed last couple of weeks the possibility to send a bill 541. I spoke to the county commission last night. I have provided you in the folder, you should have three documents. One is a letter that I want to send to the state tax commissioner. The other is a letter that I want to send to the citizens of Lake County County and then I think the last one is Senate Bill 541. So just what I will do is, and the purpose of this, me communicating this to you is is that Senate Bill 541 was passed in March of 2007. And at that time, the purpose of the bill was to close the gap between the state formula, which determines how much money it takes for a school system to operate, and the local share that a county gives to the school board. And what had happened over the years with the passage of the REC decision, I think in 1982, is that the gap between the local share and how much it takes to operate and run a school system has increased. Obviously inflation has caused the price of the school system, the price of the school system has increased over the last 30 years and property valuations have stayed the same. So the state has subsidized and was going broke in paying the difference of that local share and the state formula. So in 2007, Senate Bill 541 was passed and with that, there's really two key components of Senate Bill 541. One is that county assessors as effective of next Monday, July 1, 2013, must have property valuations at market value. And there is, there's a 10% deviation there that you can go from that 100%. So in reality, you can have property valuations at 90% of true market value. The other part of Senate Bill 541 is that if assessors do not have market value at least 90%, then the school board will be punished financially. And the punishment comes in the difference between the local share and what the state formula says you need to operate a school system. So for an example, and this is a fictitious number, because everything that I have is preliminary. I had my audit report on June 6. Faith Dangerfield came to the assessor's office, audited the office, gave me some preliminary numbers. She was the one that kind of introduced me to what Senate Bill 541 and the consequences of that. I will not have the results of those numbers until July, early July. But as she indicated to me that, you know, based on prior audits and looking at the numbers that she did on June 6, that we are not going to be in compliance. And one of the things that I have done, because this just kind of fell into my lap, I have written a letter to the state, and you have that letter, and actually I want to take the time and I'll read it. And I did this last night at the board, or at the county commission meeting. But I have also, I am also going to send a copy of this letter to the governor, Senator Kirkedahl, Senators Braun Stallings, Delegate Josh Dowers, Delegate Jeff Eldridge, Delegate Kevin Craig, Delegate Jim Morgan, the PBC Chair, Jeff Ambergyn, and I will make an attachment to the letter to the citizens, but they will also receive this letter. Now, but as a newly elected assessor in Lake County, I take great pride in running my office with honesty and integrity. It is also very important to me that this office function in accordance with West Virginia state law, policy, and procedure. However, my greatest responsibility and honor is to be a representative of the people of Lake County. The purpose of this letter is to address the impact of Senate Bill 541, or impact the Senate Bill 541 will have on Lake County. After meeting with Faith Dangerfield from the West Virginia State Tax Office on June 6, 2013, I was made aware of how the passage of this bill in March 2007 could have devastating financial effects to the taxpayers and the local school board in Lake County. In 2007, when Senate Bill 541 was passed, county assessors had six years, if needed, to gradually raise property valuations to meet the expectations of the law by 2013. In my meeting with Ms. Dangerfield, I was informed that property valuations over the past several years in Lake County were quote "well under market value." Additionally, I was informed that there was no attempt to correct the problem during the time allocated from '07 to '13. As a consequence, I am now charged with bringing several property valuations up to standard in one year, and that one year is not exactly true. It's less than that because I have to have my books submitted to the state for tax year 2013 on January 31. And I just kind of found that out after I had written this letter. So actually, we have about six months to get it right. Due to the disregard of the former administrations, the citizens of Lake County are now facing a sudden unforeseen tax increase. Let me assure you that I intend to meet the state requirements, policy, and procedures. However, due to the unrealistic timeframe passed on by the prior administration, I am requesting a waiver from the state that will allow the valuation corrections to be done in a stepwise, fair, and equitable way. As I stated, I represent the people of Lake County and it is my duty to represent them in a way that does not cause them a financial burden at no fault of their own. I hope that you will strongly consider this request to resolve the mistakes of the past administration and allow me to correct these issues in a more time-efficient manner. While I respect the direction of the state, I do ask you to take careful consideration and review each and every county individually and consider each of their very own unique circumstances. And of course, I go on to thank them for taking time to consider the request and ask them to extend the July 1, 2013 deadline for three years. Now, the truth of the matter is, is that there's nothing in state code that allows for a waiver. I mean, this bill was passed in '07, then, you know, there was legislation every year to repeal the bill. It never happened. There were amendments that were asked to be, for the bill to be amended. It was, it basically passed in its true form. The only thing that changed in the bill from March of '07 was the original start date or the effective date was July 1, March, or July 1 of 2010. And the Assessors Association lobbied to extend that date because there were counties such as Lincoln and others who had a large gap to fill and wanted to be able to, you know, fill that gap in increments as opposed to, you know, one large sudden impact of property valuations in one year. And that's, that's kind of where I'm at. I feel like that I've been put in a situation, and the people of Lake County's been put in a situation where it's 2007 and they're asking us to do this in one year. So, you know, what I've asked is, I asked the county commission to support this endeavor to the state tax commission, asking for a waiver. I think it would be in the interest of the county board of education to drive the letter. And I think there's other concerns that the board would face with Senate Bill 541. The consequences of Senate Bill 541 is, you know, hinged on the production of an assessor. And, you know, I don't know that that's fair. Also, even with the REC decision, I'm not sure that we're going, you know, with the REC decision with, decision that was, was made by Judge REC, I mean, we're going in the opposite direction if money is taken away per pupil in accounting. And so this is something that is, it's, it's serious, it's here, and in reality, if, if we don't get more time to do this, I don't know that it can be done. I don't know that logistically I can get it done with the amount of 17,000 properties in Lake County that would have to be visited. You know, state code says we have to visit those once every three years and, you know, and try to cram that into six months. So I'm asking for your support to try to move this thing forward in a way that we can get our hands around it. So I'd be happy to take any questions. Don't know that, and if I don't know the answers, I'll do my best to get them for you.
Do you want to particularly, if I have anything?
No, I just.
So is, is your understanding, Josh, that in, I guess, Bernie, did we get our preliminary comps in December? Is that correct?
Yes.
Is it your understanding that the preliminary comps we've received this December would reflect the penalty?
Well, what, what I can do is, and this is what, this is what I think is going to happen. I think that when I get my audit back, and I don't know this for sure, that I think that I'll be able to run the numbers to see where we're at now. And if, if nothing would change, and there's a formula as to how, what the state subsidizes from the local share to what the state formula says you need to operate, and basically you won't lose all of that, you'll just be penalized a percentage of that. And I know that, that the state tax commissioner will send a preliminary report to the state board of education in December, and that's what you guys base your budget on. This is the conflicting thing, and this is part of what the bill is, is, I don't think they hammered every issue out because they have not decided which numbers they're going to use. In December, you get a preliminary report, you know, and you base your budget off that report. We may not be in compliance at that time, but I still have an entire month to get in compliance. And, you know, there, there are things that can change in one month, and my, my numbers are final on January 31. That's when tax year 2013 for me closes. And the legislature, they did not define which set of numbers would be officially used. And, and the problem is, is with, you know, the dates don't align for you guys to do the things that you need to do. I mean, if there are going to be cuts and personnel cuts because of a budget, and that, that's a, that's a question that needs to be answered by the state board. And if they don't know the answer to that, they need to find the answer to that.
You alluded to one of the problems that the superintendent and the board would have. You know, we received preliminary comps in December for a reason, to analyze where we stand, or we're going to make any adjustments with personnel or whatever. You got personnel laws, if you have to do, and there are due dates requirements with those. And, you know, this, this can't keep being strung out to where we don't know what we have to do. So that would be, you know, immediate.
Well, my, my advice would be that somebody, make somebody give an answer as to what numbers they're going to use. Are they going to use the preliminary? Is that going to be the final numbers, the preliminary numbers in December? I mean, you're making your budget off of it, and if you come back in January and that's not the numbers, because it's not always the same, are you going to use those numbers? So that's a question that needs to be answered. And I talked to Jerry Knight, and this is a name that you may want to write down. Jerry is a, has a, is a consultant, and he is the former PBC Chair for the state tax department. And he represents several counties in the state, understands, as he told me, when I asked him about Senate Bill 541, he said, and I was, and we were, we were together going through the formula, how to, how would the, the, how the penalty would hurt what the state subsidizes the county if, if we were not in compliance. And it's complicated. He said, well, Josh, there's not a handful of people in the state that understand it, you know, and, but he does. And he understands the bill, and he fought against the bill, and when he realized he was losing that fight, he fought to amend the bill and lost that fight, but he does understand the bill, so.
We, you know, we, we have to submit a preliminary budget later in spring, and that is doable. But unfortunately, if it relates, if our personnel reductions are.
Right.
And as a part of us doing that, then that makes it unrealistic for us to make recommendations. You have to ask to make recommendations, hearings, and all those type of things that they provided for us to be able to do it. So that makes, and that does need to get to the other point of penalizing the board of education for something we had no control of.
Right.
Why the boards of education have been selected to be the ones, to be the recipients of a penalty, I think.
Right.
Maybe.
And I think the Assessors Association even, you know, made that point. If assessors are not doing their job, punish assessors. Punish the school board.
It could be the assessor and the county commander, because they're in charge of the test.
Yeah, right. You know, and, and it's a joint effort with the county commission and assessors, but the, but that's the way the legislation was written and it passed, you know, and like I said, I think that there is, I definitely think there's some litigation there for, you know, the REC decision and thorough efficient schools and you're going in the opposite direction if that happens.
Well, as most everybody here, I think, understands, after the REC decision, the state board was given the task of developing the school aid formula that would take into account the inequities of counties, you know, as far as finances are concerned. And it was done. And so now we see a formula that's much different than it was 20 years ago because of that, because it allowed to those differences in counties and the local share and all that. So you upset the whole scheme of everything. If all of a sudden, once again, you're going to penalize a county, particularly one that, or any that didn't have any control over, which you're going to penalize, but you're going to upset that whole formula and I'm, and I, you know.
Well, and another serious flaw in the bill was that even though there were audits from '07, '08, '09, '10, '11, and '12, there were no punitive actions taken or corrective actions taken if there wasn't any growth shown. So if in '07, if I got to be at 90% of market value and I'm at 78%, and then I go to '08 and I'm still at 78%, then yeah, you maybe fell on audit, but there's no severe consequences until July 1, 2013.
Who's, who's been advised in this past six-year period of time that, that the county hasn't met?
Well, I was teaching social studies, so it wasn't me.
Were you?
So I don't, I don't know.
Well, I mean, you know, the offices.
Yeah, I have no idea, you know, and I was, you know, I know Mr. Matthews asked that question yesterday at the county commission meeting. I don't know.
Well, is it your understanding that the state tax department advised someone that they want me?
They get an audit, I get an audit report. And I was told when, on June 6, I asked when I was going to get my audit report back, you know, something in my hand that I could read. And she said that you and the county commission will receive that early in July. And so I would assume that if the county commission receives an audit that I'm having done, I would assume that they receive past audits. I don't know that, I wasn't here, but I would feel safe in making that assumption.
Ms. Lucas, I think.
I do. How many other counties are in this situation?
Well, I, I was told that there is a handful in the same boat we're in and a few more floating down the same, same river, but.
So we don't know if, if.
But I was told that we are probably in the worst shape.
Okay. So I guess maybe we, my concern is, well, is just for Lake County, but then looking at how many other counties in the state comply versus how many do not comply, we do not know if those other counties have started trying to.
There's been many counties that in '07, now they don't have the same assessor they did in '07, because, you know, the valuations had to go up and, you know, and they were proactive about it. And that's not the case in every county, but at our Assessors Association meeting in Wheeling, this was, you know, a topic that was talked about. Of course, at that time, I wasn't realizing that it was right back home in Hamlin that I was going, you know, go back to it. But it is, you know, there were assessors that started implementing that gradual increase to meet the benchmark of 90%, you know, and so even the ones that started that path, they closed the gap. Because that's, remind you, this is the purpose of the bill, is to close the gap between what the state says you need and what your local share is giving, you know, so. And it's not going to change, it's not going to change how much money the school board gets. My understanding is, because the state formula, I mean, yet property valuations are going to go up, but this is with the state formula, you know, they're still going to tell you how much you need to operate. So, yeah, we, but that budget is going to be consumed more with the local share and less with the state subsidy. If that makes sense.
Another question. I heard you say, or I think I heard you say that you would not get your final report until, or July.
That's right.
And that's when we would know the hard, fast numbers.
Right.
When will we know as a school system if that penalty is going to be placed in?
Well, I'll say two things. One is, as soon as I know, you'll know, okay? And what I'll do is, is I'll get Jerry Knight, and I can come to a board meeting, or we can meet, and I want to be able to give you, give you guys those numbers. And in fact, those numbers are not concrete now. They just have to be improved over the next six months. I mean, they have to be at 90%. And they're, when I keep saying 90%, and this is, when you look into the bill, and you're going to see where it says 60%, okay? And they're talking about the assessed value, all right? And I explain it in terms of the appraised value. And it's just, we're getting to four in, in different ways. I'm going two plus two, and the bill was three plus one. But, you know, as soon as I find out, you'll know, and, and I think that as soon as we get some confirmation back from the state tax commissioner as to whether or not they're going to provide us a waiver, I sent those letters out yesterday. And, you know, that's the exact letter that I sent out. I am, the, the letter to the citizens is going out next week at some point. And so I think the key thing here is to be open, honest, transparent, inform the public of what the situation is, be a part of the solution and not the problem, and try to collectively work together to see if we can at least provide some sort of cushion of a burden on the taxpayer and payer and the school board.
Because if this penalty is imposed, we, we do not know, we will not know what those penalties will be until they're applied.
You'll not know of anything for sure, or you'll, you'll not have an official idea until your preliminary reports go to the state board of education in December. That's my understanding, you know. And, and this is stuff that I've read. I mean, I'm, you know, so I don't, I haven't, I'm a rookie.
Well, you'd be like telling us maybe how far this thing in Lake County was.
Yeah, and, and the issue is, and it's very complicated. I mean, there is with, you know, before, you know, when the bill was passed, and, you know, there are in the audit, there are subsections in the audit. And, you know, we talk about the 90%, and it's easy to, to reflect 90% if you manipulate numbers in other areas, you know, in sales ratio or, you know, coefficient of deviation. And there's a lot of, there's a lot of formulas that go into that. But the, the reality is, is that in 2000, after July 1, 2013, is, is that, you know, all of these numbers are considered. You know, they look at that 90% value first. And, you know, while some of the past reports may show that you're in compliance in one subsection, they're, you know, they're way off in others. And that's, and that's what I was told by Ms. Dangerfield, you know, that it's, we're a long ways from home at this point.
What, what could we as a school system, you know, how, is there anything that we could do as leverage with the state tax commissioner?
I think sending a letter, asking for a through your request, you know, understanding that you have an assessor, and I believe a county commission who is, I mean, I'm ready to fix the problem. I just want the time to do it. I mean, you know, it's, and, and when I say that, it's, logistically, I don't think I can do it in six months. It's unfair to do it in six months, and it's unfair to the taxpayer. You know, and I would just suggest that, you know, you have somebody that's working toward meeting the expectations of Senate Bill 541. It's state law, we don't have a choice, we have to do it until, you know, unless it's proven unconstitutional, it's law, you know, and it's been law for six years. It just went into, it goes into effect tomorrow, or Monday. So I just think support from the board and maybe the tax commissioner and the governor and delegates and senators realizing that, you know, times are tight the way it is, and, you know, if we take a cut from what is subsidized by the state, I mean, how do you operate? I mean, and you may even, you know, if you take a $200,000 cut, and I, these are fictitious numbers, I mean, I don't know, a $500,000 cut or a million dollar cut, how's that going to affect what happens in Lake County schools, you know?
It's going to have a huge impact.
Sure it is.
I don't care if it's CDLs and all.
Sure it is.
And when we start looking at the penalty, it's very unfair to our students. We are operating, when Sandy tells us all the time, you know, we have to walk because we do not have, we're not the luxury of some of our surrounding counties in the tax base that they have. It's unfortunate, you know, very unfortunate that not only for the taxpayers, you know, to, to be asked to have this imposed on them, maybe all of a sudden, but for our students. This, this is devastating, you know, as far as, you know, I start looking at, you know, what and where, would we cut and could we cut, ending up maybe without any all of their own going into a deficit.
Right.
That is just something that we've worked very, very hard to keep from happening. I know the board has seen this, you know, so supportive in things that we've been doing and trying to make sure that we are staying in the line.
Right.
But this is devastating, you know, for us and realizing that there has been many years for this to go into effect. And I, the way I understand it, once it is completely there, it will benefit the school system.
Well, you'll be in compliance.
Right.
And you will receive the amount that, that you should receive.
Right.
Right.
But I am very concerned, I know.
Sure, and I think, and, and I think we're all on the same page. I mean, I, there's, you know, I agree. I mean, I, I was an educator for 13 years, principal and teacher, so, you know, I value education, you know, this is my home. I taught in Lake County, and, you know, it's, it's, it's a tough situation, and as I said last night, it's more, it's not going to go away unless, unless it is, you know, unless there's litigation that proves it to be unconstitutional and, you know, with punishing the school board, because I believe assessors should have to do their job, you know, I mean, that, that's why you're elected, to do the job. But punishing one entity for the success or failure of another, I don't understand that thought.
It's, the reason I asked the question earlier about how many counties have not complied because the tax commission, they're under no obligation to give us a waiver, you know?
There's no, there is nothing in code about a waiver on this.
And.
And I'm not, and I don't want to, you know, give any falsehoods about that. I mean, there is, I'm just going out on a limb and I'm hoping that our delegates and senators and the governor will, you know, recognize that the situation in Lake County is unique, and you just can't throw a blanket over top of Lake County, or the state of West Virginia and say, do this. I mean, there are, there is a very unique situation here, and the fact that valuations of property have been stagnant, you know, for years, and we know they have been since '07, because it's been documented, but, you know, our, the gap is large here. the gap is large here. And, and there was no room, you know, that, that gap wasn't closed in those six years. So, you know, and we're looking to bring six years, seven years of inflation, you know, up to par in six months. I mean, and that's the reality of it.
Looking at the majority of the counties, if they've complied, then, you know, I'm thinking, why would, why would they look at these other counties? And I don't know if they are, as you said, we're probably in the worst condition.
Right.
Situation. Maybe we haven't tried to increase any, whereas some of the other counties may have increased some.
Right.
You know, what, what's the carrot out there for them to say, okay, we're going to allow you all six more years, or three more years, or two more years?
Right. I do know this, I do know this for certain, and there's other numbers that matter, but I was looking at numbers this morning, and I know that the, you know, it's 2013, so this audit's for 2012. So, you're always a year behind, just like the school system. But it is, I know that the 2012 audit for the 2011, I guess maybe it was the 2011 tax year, that was one of our worst sales ratio numbers. So, you know, I don't, you know, I, I don't know how that will, if, if '12 tax year is as bad as '11, then, and I hope that it's not, but if it is, I mean, it, you know, it's not going to pull that number up any, so.
That keeps me reasonably far, I'm sorry.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, it's, it's eager.
I think we all understand the intention of the law and, and don't disagree that property va, tax evaluation should be what they should be.
Right.
On fair market value. Our problem is just maybe that we're involved, that is the one that has to accept the penalty.
Yeah, and I'm, I'm happy to go on record that I agree with you. I do not think a school board should be punished for the success or failure of an assessor's job, you know?
And I guess, like you say, the constitution and all that.
Right. It should be determined.
We're concerned, as, as we sit here, you know, our, as we try to keep our finances in line, Bertie's indicated to us recently that in the next couple of years, we're kind of wavering on the line anyway. And any significant amount of money would certainly cause us out of guilt. And in the timeframe, once again, you know, to deal with personnel issues, it could mean trying to cut staff that you have to have.
Well, I'll, I'll finish with saying that I, I'm committed to work close with, with you and the board and to keep you informed and, you know, I mean, we've, this is not the first time that you and I have talked about this. I mean, it's, I think on June 6th, when I had my monitoring for it, I think maybe two days after, after you and Jeff were in my office and.
You got their attention.
Yes, so, you know, it's not, just got to move forward, try to fix. That's, that's where we're at, so.
Can I ask one question? Josh, do you know what the appraised value is at the county?
Well, that's.
An average?
And that is a question I expect, expected to have to answer, but the average, though, I don't know what that is. And it's a very unique circumstance because, you know, if, if your property is worth $100,000 and you're 30% away from that benchmark of 90%, and you're at 60%, okay? The price in, you know, and somebody lives in a $300,000 home, and they're 30% away from that 90% benchmark, then the, the price is going to be different. And I've actually gone out in the community and installed people's houses and places I felt safe. And, and would just ask, what do you think your property's worth? What do you think the fair market value of your home is? And since people generally know about what their place is worth. And then I called the office and I'd say, hey, what have we got sewn up so and so's property in the books for? You know, so maybe, and I think my house is worth about $110,000. I'd call over and say, we got it booked for $22,500, you know? And so, and that is, and you're not even taxed at that $22,500.
Right, you're only at 60% of that.
You're taxed at 60% of that $22,500. And, but that's not the case for everybody. I mean, I've talked to some folks that when you do the sell, and the sales ratio is what the property is worth versus what we have appraised at. And we have to be at 90% of fair market value. So, it's not the same for everybody, you know? And, and to give an average would even be misleading, because when you look at, you know, the bell curve on it, the, there's just, it's so far out on both sides, but more on the low side, you know?
So ultimately, once this is corrected, it will generate more money for the school board.
Well, in theory, yes, through the, through the local share, yes, but.
You want to cut the state share.
Yeah, but it's going to cut the state.
Well, but what happens is, see, we get to keep 10% of the local share, so as that number goes up, our 10% goes up. So, if it does, you know, it will help us, and it will also help us on our excess levy, you know? We'll be generating, so once it is completed, it will be a win-win for the school system. So, if we.
So really, these past six years, we could benefit.
Yeah, we could, yes, yes, we could.
So, Bernie, when did you find out about it?
I've known about it all, all along, that the bill was passed, and, you know, I was under.
Yeah, I know, you mentioned to me several months ago.
The assumption that it was, you know, that it was being taken care of. I didn't realize that we weren't taking care of it. But yeah, I knew the bill was passed, and I could tell that it was going to be a penalty to the school system.
It would have been nice if they advised different entities, but they had also advised the school boards.
Yeah, I think it was poorly, I think it was loosely constructed.
Had they done that, then, you know, it's a possibility some pressure could be exerted on the one, you know, the boys.
Well, they should have had in this bill also, for, for politicians that read the protest, they should have mandated so much percentage every year that we.
Right, just to show, I agree, I, I'll say this, I agree.
So, Bernie, you did, you did not see what you might tell with the taxes that came in from your year, is that? Yeah, I mean, it's luxury, so, you know, there's no, I didn't know, have any real reason to know why it was luxury.
You mean, from one year to the next?
Yeah, there would be changes.
Yeah, there will, I mean, there's going to be small changes, you know? I mean, in years past, there would have been.
Dipping in.
Right. And this affects all real property, so that's residential and commercial, so.
Well, I think the sentiment of the board would probably be to develop a letter and send this requested, because it did mention guns.
Right.
I think we're on board with that, Josh. We appreciate you coming, and we'll work towards that. If we have any questions.
Thanks for having me.
Anytime.
And we will be in touch.
Okay.
Good luck.